Well, until tonight, I had plans to go to my in-laws, brother-in-law, sister-in-law. My wife says, oh, yeah, you're at least as the flu.
Good evening. I'd like to call together the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for November 21st, 2022. I have a, before we start, I'm saddened and angered by the terrible news of a shooting attack in Colorado Springs for the citizens at Club Q in Colorado Springs. Colorado is a place where everyone should be able to be who they are, love who they love, and live freely without threat of violence. We extend our hearts and prayers to those loved ones and families directly affected by this senseless tragedy and grieve their loss together. Please join together with me in a moment of silence and reflection for the lives lost and damaged, for healing in our communities, and for a path forward together with peace and love. Thank you. We have one action item on our agenda tonight, and that is the proposed 2023 budget. We'll start with a public comment on this item. If there's anyone here, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak on the budget, this is your opportunity. If you're joining us online, you may raise your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting. And I'll ask our clerk if anyone has raised their hand to speak.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we will close our public's right to speak on this and go to agenda item number one. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Have some new faces for our budget this year. You've all met, but I'd like to, first of all, thank our staff, management team, for working very hard this year on putting this budget together under some difficult circumstances, but we got it done, so happy to present it to you this evening. And we invited all of our department directors here this evening to present portions of the budget, so you can hear directly from them, and we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. And the judge is coming. I can scoot a little bit, too. Okay. All right. Welcome, Judge. So, to start out, this was a message I had in the budget message, but I'd like to read it so the public hears it, too, because I think it's just a good setup for our budget for 2023 and the current situation for the city of Wheat Ridge. But as you all know, the Wheat Ridge community and economy have proven to be very resilient despite several unique challenges since 2020. Revenues have performed significantly better than estimated, and commercial and residential development activity continues to thrive. Federal financial assistance of over $10 million in CAREs and ARPA funding has provided additional resources to address the impacts on the community from the COVID-19 pandemic. Grant funding of over $50 million between 2020 and 2023, and urban renewal authority bond funds in the amount of $37.5 million are enabling the city to invest in catalytic public improvement projects across the entire community. Ally likes this part. Wheat Ridge is in a good place. Boom. The 2023 proposed budget cautiously projects an optimistic future for the city in the near term. Revenues are projected to continue to increase, but at a slower pace than the recent past. Commercial and residential development will remain strong in Wheat Ridge, but is likely to slow, which will decrease one-time revenues generated from construction activity. Inflation continues to remain high, increasing the city's costs for goods and labor. Some uncertainty does exist concerning the future of the economy. However, I believe Wheat Ridge has built a strong foundation, and we will continue to remain resilient against future challenges. So with that, tonight, we are going to, this is the agenda. Are you doing the flicking? Yep, thank you. Ally's doing the flicking. We'll start with, it's always good to look at the city's vision and priorities, just to get a sense of why we're doing all this. So we'll go over that. Quick year in review, a little bit shorter than we did last year. We just came to you all with kind of a year in review a couple of weeks ago. And then a quick budget overview, looking at the general fund in particular, and also the capital improvement program funds, the renewal Wheat Ridge bond funds, some special, major special funds, and our 2E bond fund. And then look at our budget strategic priorities that are included in the 2023 proposed budget, our proposed staffing and benefits for '23, and then looking ahead in the future, and then what the remaining budget process is for this year. Once again, very proud. We've received this for the last several years. The city earned the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for last year's, or this year's budget. To earn this award, the budget must meet a number of detailed criteria established by the GFOA, which is then reviewed by three budget experts from across the country for compliance, and we met that once again. So, again, as I mentioned, I always like to start with this vision, just to remind everybody why we're doing all this. And this vision has been in place for several years. This is Wheat Ridge Vision 2035 that has been drafted and put together by city council. Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city and community for families. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, is a hub of commerce with a choice of economically viable commercial areas, and has diverse transportation. Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship, and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle, and are proud of their hometown. We urge a great place to live, work, and play. And then looking at our council, city council priorities, these were set by city council on February 20th of 2021. We're all wearing masks. I think I just saw a picture of that day again, back in the good old days. But we met and did some good work and put some priorities together that were for the 2021 and 2022 fiscal years. And some of these have been completed, and I lay, there's a red asterisk next to those where we do have some money in the '23 budget to address those priorities. So just again, real quickly, the eight priorities were new efforts of engagement in government, understanding city processes, implement bulk plan in all residential zone districts, reexamine advanced sidewalks on 38th Avenue, review the vision, mission, and funding of local works, streamline permit processes, commercial corridor improvements, policy on non-conforming accessory dwelling units, and develop solutions and work with partners to address homelessness. And you should have all received an email from me, I believe, last week. We are trying to nail down a date for retreat here coming up in January, so if you guys could respond to that, that would be great. And then we'll come up with some new priorities for the next couple of years. So as you all know, we've been very busy the last few years, and kept the mayor and some of you and our local business organizations very busy with many ribbon cuttings across the city. It's very exciting. We've issued 366 new business licenses so far this year. 125 of those are actually located within the city of Wheat Ridge. As you all know, small local businesses are the lifeblood of our local economy, and we are proud to be home to such a thriving business community. Just for your reference, there's New Image Brewery Brewing. It's in this photo. Hendrick's Salons, Mike's, let's see, what's the other one?
Mike's Cameras.
Mike's Cameras, yeah, that moved out to the Applewood Shopping Center, and then Christian Brothers Automotive. Those are just a very few of the ribbon cuttings that we've done over the last year. But then, looking at our major developments in the community, again, and Lauren can attest to this, all these developments come through her department, and we've been, probably a couple of our last years have been the busiest we've ever seen in development in Wheat Ridge. But after many years of planning and legwork, the Clear Creek Crossing project is coming to fruition. Intermountain Health Lutheran Hospital is not only broke ground, but topped out and are ahead of schedule and hoping to open sometime in 2024. We're also celebrating, we celebrated the open of the Foothills Credit Union at Clear Creek Crossing and Dutch Brothers Coffee just opened here this last week. Lifetime Fitness is starting. They're doing the dirt work for that in the Hampton Inn Motel. And there's also plans for a restaurant and entertainment district out at Clear Creek Crossing, so very excited about that. If you remember, in 2021, the city did receive repayment from the Long's Peak Metropolitan District in the amount of about $9.8 million. That was the money the city upfronted for the access ramp construction of I-70. City Council did earmark those funds to help us complete the improved Wadsworth project. Great progress is also being made on the Gold's Market. If you haven't been out there recently, very exciting. We had an opening this weekend. Esther's Tavern opens this last weekend. And before that, the Cogmo's Pet Store and Bakery expanded, M's Ice Cream opened, Queen City Coffee, Berkeley Park Running Company, and soon to come, Illegal Pizza and Live Slow Brewery with a bowling alley and the XO Gift Shop. So very exciting opportunities for that neighborhood there, really changed that neighborhood. Progress continues at the Wheat Ridge Ward Station. Residential development continues to move, along with many new neighbors moving in up there. And finally, the ridge at 38th is really continuing to blossom with a lot of new residential rooftops, which are very important for business growth. So it's important to also see those rooftops, not just commercial businesses going in. But we do have several new businesses coming in on 38th. A sushi restaurant, Little Brazil, is moving from the Gold's Market to the West 38th Apartments, a new bike shop just across the street from that, a new barbecue restaurant in the old Right Coast Pizza. Mestizo Brew Cantina should have received their CO, I think, this week, last week, so they should be opening very soon. So very fun to see a lot of those improvements along our downtown Main Street also. And, you know, we had a lot of great things going on, a lot of challenges also, but we still powered through and were very successful, I think, in a lot of areas, but been a very busy year, productive year, but not without its challenges. As a service organization, we continue to have to recruit, train, and retain good people to serve the community. We have a turnover rate this year of 16% we're projecting, which compares to about 9.7% last year. So it's up. We're not the only one in that boat. National average is about 20% right now, so you could say we're doing a little bit better. This year, the city did respond to the great resignation and rising inflation by giving employees a mid-year cost of living adjustment this year, so we thank you, council, for supporting that. We are, we used existing funds for that, so we didn't have to do a budget supplemental, but the COLA was anywhere between 1% and 7%. The lower-grade employees received the higher percentage rate, and the directors, the chief or myself, did not receive a COLA. Granning COLA is fairly rare, and for us in Wheat Ridge, we haven't done one of those. We usually do a market adjustment, but because of the rising inflation, we felt it was imperative to remain competitive and retain our employees. And, you know, COVID, it's still, we're still responding to COVID just a little bit. We do have some budget in this year's, some funds in this year's budget to, for health and safety precautions due to the pandemic. We're hoping that's winding down, but we have really good procedures and systems in place to pivot back and forth between normal operating procedures and remote work if needed, based on any increases in case counts. Then, finally, the ransomware attack on August 29th had a very significant impact on our organization. Fortunately, it was not very significant to the public. We were able to continue providing services and programs. There was a few hiccups here and there, but I'm really proud of the way that our staff responded to that, and we're building back stronger, and we're almost there, so very happy about that. We just recently had a debrief. Jefferson County provides service, and they came out and did a debrief with us, so we've learned a lot. We're gonna put an action plan together and continue making improvements when it comes to our security and network systems. Now into some numbers, your favorite part of the budget. Continuing, again, year in review, looking at 2022 still, our estimated general fund budget. You can see, just as a reminder, the original budget means what budget city council adopted last year. So actually, you got, I think it was October of 2021, so that's the original budget. The estimated budget is what we project the budget will be at December 31st of 2022. We were still a bit conservative when that budget was adopted due to COVID, but fortunately, our local economy did much better than expected in '21 and '22. Beginning with the fund balance for 2022 was, the beginning fund balance for '22 was larger than expected due to significant increases in sales tax revenues in 2021. They were 12% higher than expected. The increase in '22 revenues is largely due to one-time contributions of $523,000 from the Broncos football sale. We got a rebate from the stadium district, and we'll talk about that a little bit later this evening. Increases in revenues from sales tax, build and use tax, building permits, Excel franchise tax, lodger tax, recreations fees, investment interest, which Chris can speak to, that's like $1,000, 1,000% increase, I think, and the ARPA funding that we received. Expenditures are estimated to be a little bit lower than we budgeted, primarily due to salary savings. So our, as you know, we attempt to bring forward a budget that has a 25% reserves with you every year, and that's what the '21 budget was adopted as, but we're projecting that we're gonna have a 34% reserve at the end of this year. So revenues came in a little bit higher than expected, and expenses are a little bit less than expected. So with that, I'll shut up for a bit and turn it over to Ally. She's going to go through a budget overview of the '23 budget.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Goff. Let's talk a little bit about the general fund. We'll first just touch on the fund structure, and then we'll talk about the 2023 proposed budget. So just as a reminder of our fund structure, at the top, we have the general fund, so that's in green. Our guest this evening, Patrick, heard all this a few weeks ago, so Patrick, we might test you in a minute on this. He was at Wheat Ridge 101. I hear the budget stuff was a big hit, so thank you. Okay, good. So the general fund up at the top, that's the city's operating budget. This is where you'll find the majority of personnel and, you know, most of the costs associated with running the city. And then next, you'll see we have seven special funds. In some cases, these are designated by law to track revenues and expenditures.
I'm sorry.
I did do that, yeah. He's making fun of my accent down here. Law, to track revenues and expenditures separately from the general fund. So a good example of that, I'm thinking, chief, about the police investigation fund, I think, is mandatory, that that is set up for forfeitures, and we keep that there. In other cases, they just help us with the budget process. So these special funds are public art, police investigation, open space, municipal court, conservation trust, equipment replacement, and then crime prevention. Below that, you'll see the city's capital improvement program. Maria and Lauren are gonna speak to much of that. You'll see a 10-year plan for the maintenance and construction of our durable and fixed assets, like streets and drainage ways, bridges, and other items. And as a reminder, 20% of the city's lodgers' tax goes to support the CIP, and 30% goes into that crime prevention fund that we talked about earlier. You'll see, and then below that, you'll see the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bonds Project Fund. You might remember that from last year, we added that fund. It's set up specifically to accept the transfer from Renewal Wheat Ridge from the bond, and then expend those monies on the projects. So, you know, you all, last year, approved an IGA between Renewal Wheat Ridge and the city for the purpose of managing those funds for projects. And then finally, we have the 2E bond, which we'll talk about again a little bit later, but at this point, it's mostly, we're paying off the debt from that. I'll just pause a minute, actually. The city manager mentioned the original budget, but just as a quick reminder for everybody, I didn't write, I'm going a little off script, but we've got, we talk about different types of budgets, so this might be helpful here. We talk about actual, so 2021 actual, the actual results of last year, right? We talk about original. We might talk about adjusted, the adjusted 2022 budget. So in your budget book, you'll see lots of columns with adjusted 2022. That means the original 22 budget plus any budget supplementals that you've approved through September. Okay, so that's the adjusted budget. Estimated is where we expect to be at the end of 2022, and then, of course, proposed is next year's budget. So that just might help kind of frame up our conversation. So this is the sort of total rough and tough '23 total proposed budget. Your left, the left-hand column there is all funds. So basically, we project that we will begin 2023 with a total of $48.4 million. We estimate that we will bring in a total of $78.1 million. Across all of those funds that we just talked about, we expect to spend about $92.5 million. That's the budget that we're proposing to you, $92.5 million. That's a big number for Wheat Ridge. Leaving an ending fund balance of 31, sorry, $34.1 million. And the other, the 2E bond fund is called out separately, and then other funds in that column are basically all of the funds minus the 2E bond fund. So that sort of just gives you a big picture overview of the budget. And here is that $92.4 million kind of split out by fund. So overall, again, our total budget has increased 12.5%. When I said that's a big number for Wheat Ridge, it is. It's a little bit bigger of a budget this year. 12.5% over the 2022 adopted or original budget, about $10 million. And that is largely due to planned capital projects in the Capital Improvements Fund, Renewal Wheat Ridge Fund, Open Space Fund, and Conservation Trust. And later in this presentation, you're gonna hear about all the projects that are included in those funds, and it's really exciting. It's exciting because we're gonna get a lot done. We're proposing to you that we get a lot done through capital projects next year. So turning our attention now strictly to the general fund, as Patrick mentioned, we continue to be cautiously optimistic about the city's revenue projections, and we continue to forecast conservatively. So as far as revenue goes, this budget includes modest projections for sales and use taxes. The 2023 revenue is projected to decrease by 11.9% compared to our 2022 year-end estimates. This is due to one-time revenues that we received this year, including $3.9 million from ARPA, so that was the second tranche of funding that we received there, over $500,000 from the Broncos sale, the rebate, and then just the overall projected reduction in development-related revenues, like building permits and building use taxes. So that's why we have the 11.9% decrease to 2022 and a smaller decrease compared to the 2021. So again, projected revenue for the general fund is $46.3 million. We have conservatively projected increase in sales tax by 4.5% in 2023 over the 2022 year-end budget, and a 9% increase compared to the 2022 adopted budget. So just to put it in perspective, through October, which includes September retail sales, sales tax has actually increased 9% over the same period last year. But again, we do like to, we prefer to project conservatively, and again, the sort of, we were only projecting a 5.5% increase over last year. So, you know, grocery and online sales continue to be strong, and as we've discussed, our local businesses have really rebounded strongly from the pandemic, so we feel good about those numbers. Sorry about the share bar on the very top. It's a little irritating, I know. We plan to upgrade monitors next year, and that should help. But this slide just shows you the financial, you know, sort of the financial health of the city and sort of our general fund revenue history of this current decade, over the last 10 years. So you can see, you know, our revenues have, they sort of grew, and then we had a lot of one-time revenues come in in '21 and '22, again, largely ARPA. So we're sort of, we're capping out, we're about even there. The portion of this bar in orange show one-time revenues, and we always want to make sure we're showing you what these one-time revenues are, because if we don't, it sort of creates a false picture. But frankly, in 2023, we're not projecting any one-time revenues. We haven't heard of any infusions from the feds in the general fund. We're not projecting any really big new developments, one-time money. So we aren't, we aren't calling for any sort of one-time revenues this year. Moving on to expenditures, the general fund expenditure projection is about $47.3 million. You can see here on the slide, compared to 2022, that's a 2% increase to the 2022 adjusted budget if we exclude the transfers. It will leave us with an ending fund balance of $17.2 million and an unrestricted fund balance of $10.4 million, plus the Tabor emergency reserves, the 3% that's required, of $1.4 million. So sort of taking the 22% unrestricted plus the 3%, we wanted to just sort of show that council might consider that this budget hits its 25% target, but we wanted to just break that out for you here. So, you know, your fund balance policy requires a minimum of 17%, which would be $8 million. Your maximum is 35%, which would be about $16.5 million. And so I know that Treasurer and I have been talking a little bit about what the, what the fund balance is. So the fund balance is sort of, it's our rainy, the unrestricted fund balance is kind of like a rainy day fund that you might have, but our, you know, our total ending fund balance is what we expect to have left in the general fund of the end of next year. But again, we, we talk about restricted versus unrestricted. So we want to just include, our restricted fund balance is growing. We keep adding little categories here and there, so we just wanted to show what that looks like. So you remember back in April, we had a conversation about ARPA, right? And you all approved a funding, a spending plan for ARPA. So we're holding that money, we're holding on to all that money in our fund balance. So at the end of 2023, we expect to have a little over $4 million left of our ARPA money, so we'll be about a little more than halfway through spending it the end of 2023. There is the reserve for emergencies, which is the Tabor requirement of 1.4 that I think you mentioned, Patrick, can be used if the state declares an emergency. Or if we declare an emergency, okay. You might remember that we receive revenues called peg fees from Comcast, from every Comcast subscriber, to fund our Channel 8, so we restrict that money as well. So we'll, we expect to have So we'll, we expect to have over 200,000 of that funding left at the end of 2023. The Stadium District Funds of half a million, we're restricting that. And then we do have a restriction for the Fruitdale Loan, which will be ultimately repaid to us of just over a million. So basically, 7.2 million of our total fund balance is restricted. Here, you can see the general fund expenditures by department. So you can see that police make up 30% of our expenditure budget, Parks and Recreation 15, and down from there, Central Charges included, that you might see here at 12%. That is worker, that's sort of the, the, the cost center that we use for expenditures that apply across the organization, across the enterprise. So that's things like insurance, or workers' compensation, property liability, medical, dental, life insurance coverage, all the really fun stuff like that. You'll find in janitorial, you'll find that in, in Central Charges. So the general fund expenditure budget represents a 2% increase over the 2022 adjusted budget. And again, later on, we'll get into some of the fun nitty-gritty of exactly what we propose to do with this funding. We're making some, some transfers from the general fund, that's included in these numbers, to various special funds this year that will have a real impact on the community through programs and initiatives. So we're transferring 500,000 to the Equipment Replacement Fund to continue saving for the Enterprise Resource Planning System. We've been talking about this, that's the big analysis we're doing right now, so that we can approve, improve our software, improve our licensing technology, and improve that experience that the public has with us, as well as sort of modernize our infrastructure in that regard. So actually, together with last year's transfer, and even after funding the upgrade of all the PD radios, we'll have over 744,000 saved towards the selection, purchase, implementation, and training of these new systems. So that's really exciting. We're transferring over 1.7 million of ARPA-restricted funds to the Open Space Fund to complete projects that Karen will talk about a little bit later. And then we're transferring 3 million to the Capital Improvement Fund to implement some other exciting capital projects and maintain our infrastructure. And again, you'll hear about this in more detail in a little bit. Again, moving on to the, I'm good, look, I pasted it over. No, it didn't. I did arts and crafts. Yeah, the financial health of the city in terms of expenditure. So this shows the expenditure history of the general fund. Again, showing ongoing versus one-time expenditures. Let's see here, for 2023, I'll skip to the 2023. We have 400,000 earmarked for a comprehensive plan, 100,000 for economic development strategy, 159,000 for the implementation of e-citation, and another 118,000 in just sort of COVID mitigation. So again, we've identified those big one-time expenditures for you here. This chart shows our unrestricted ending fund balance history. And the slide really shows the histories of the city's, you know, sort of how, how we typically, what typically happens in a normal year. So the blue column for each year shows the budgeted ending fund balance as adopted by council. And the orange column shows the actual ending fund balance going back to 2013. So the green column in '22 shows where we estimate the fund balance will be. So as you can see, we have a history of conservatively projecting the ending fund balance. And between, you know, a combination of better revenues and then less spending, we've exceeded the budget every year for the last 10 years, and we expect to do the same, both this year and in 2023. And with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Thanks, Ally. So that was the general fund. We're going to move on to another fund, the Capital Improvement Program, the CIP. We'll talk about the proposed budgets and major projects, and then also major projects for next year, but also look at 2024 and beyond. As Ally mentioned, we do a 10-year CIP budget. So first of all, the 2023 proposed budget includes, as we mentioned, a $3 million transfer from the general fund. That is the primary revenue source for, for the CIP budget, but also a portion of our lodger's tax and then grants help fund the, the capital budget. So we're projecting a beginning fund balance of 12.6 million next year and projected revenues of about 18 million. That includes the three from, from the general fund, and most of the rest of it is, is grants. And then a budget of 26.7 million will leave us about 4 million at the end of next year. And Ally mentioned this kind of earlier, but 97% of next year's CIP budget is really dedicated to improving and maintaining our roads, which aligns with feedback we received in the resident survey. Majority of that is Wadsworth, but there are several other road projects, which we'll talk about in a minute. And now I'd like to turn it over to Maria, and she'll talk about some specific projects that we have in our CIP budget.
Great, thank you, Patrick. Yes, so the major project that's already ongoing and will continue through 2023 is, of course, the Wadsworth Improvement and Widening Project. We anticipate still of about a $34.9 million contract that we have in place right now with our contractor, Concrete Works of Colorado. We've expended roughly 12 million of that. We anticipate running around just about 14 before the end of the year, which will leave a balance of just under 21 million to expend in 2023. That project is running a little bit slow, slower than anticipated, but we still anticipate completing that work within the, the next year. Also there, as Patrick mentioned, we're investing a great deal in our street work, maintaining our streets, not only the ones that have significant deterioration, but also trying to invest so that we can keep the good ones that are in good condition in good condition. So putting some preventative maintenance in place saves us far fewer dollars in the long term, because we can keep them in good condition instead of spending quite a bit more once they fail. And then similarly there, you can see smaller amounts for striping, so restriping our pavement, which is a safety consideration. And then this year, we're also going to undertake an update to our stormwater master plan. That was last updated in 1979, or I believe that may have been when it was created. So we think it's time, it's due for an update. So we'll be taking that on this year in order to really prioritize what are those flooding concerns, where do we have the need for drainage improvements, as well as maintenance and larger capital projects associated with our storm, stormwater infrastructure.
And I'll take this next one. We have a few projects in the planning and design phase, which lives more in the engineering division. So bike and pedestrian improvements are going to comprise about $1.5 million in the '23 budget, and that includes two really important segments. When we complete the Wadsworth improvements, we'll still have a gap from 32nd to 35th, so we'll do environmental and design in '23. And then we've also budgeted for the construction of improvements on 35th Avenue from Teller to Sheridan that came out of the Let's Talk program. The NTMP continues to be a really popular program, so we funded it at that same higher level at $100,000, and will also undergo that programmatic review hopefully earlier next year. And then we've got $100,000 budgeted for Public Works and Engineering staff to collaborate on a much-needed traffic signal master plan, similar to that stormwater master plan. It's a little outdated, in need of a strategic review. And then we adopted several years ago the city's ADA Americans with Disability Transition Plan. So we are routinely doing ramp replacements. This year's budget is increased slightly by $25,000 for a total of 75,000. So in addition to ramp replacement, we are adding funds to do concrete grinding, which is the process by which you correct those uneven sidewalks and remove trip hazards.
So some facility-related projects that we're doing. First, here in City Hall, we're going to do some courtroom security enhancements and working closely with the judge and his staff on those, as well as improvements to the courtroom itself, including new seating.
In a less exciting, less visible budget item, but necessary, is $200,000 for JRS update. It's about as technical as I can explain this, and then it's beyond me. But most surveyors use GPS field equipment, and apparently nationwide, the National Datam or the coordinate system was updated. And so all communities that use that grid need to update and will hire a consultant to help us do that for that $200,000 line item. And then more visible, but less costly, the $25,000 will be for gateway signage, so an effort to make our entries more welcoming, unified, and have sort of a more specific Wheat Ridge brand.
Thank you. Then we'll move on. As I mentioned before, we do project out several more years for the CIP budget. So for 2024 and beyond, we are continuing the transfer from the general fund reserves to help fund projects anywhere between 4 and 5.6 million. Our annual preventive street maintenance, we're showing from anywhere from 2.25 million to 3 million, hoping to keep that even higher if possible. And then in 2024, we do have 6.5 million right now for Phase, a portion of Phase 2 of the Wadsworth reconstruction projects. Then other annual project funding, we have bridge maintenance totaling over 875,000, drainage of projects of 5.4 million through 2031, ADA improvements of $75,000 a year, striping maintenance of 150,000 a year, a public improvement project is $100,000 a year. That's for any public improvements that may come up during a private development, like extending a sidewalk, filling a sidewalk gap, or anything like that that the city can contribute to. Our neighborhood traffic management plan that we mentioned, 100,000 a year, and then streetlights. If we get requests from neighborhoods for new streetlights, or proactively the city needs to put a streetlight in, we have $10,000 a year for that. Yeah, Maria's going to talk a little bit more about our Wadsworth project.
Just a comment there. So we are evaluating right now Phase 2 costs. So they have come in, we're anticipating coming back to council in December to talk about Phase 2 and whether or not to proceed with that. We have gotten some preliminary pricing from our current contractor that we're evaluating right now, and again, hoping to talk with council about that, although it is higher than we originally projected.
Then the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Project Fund. Again, we, we created this last year after the Urban Renewal Authority Renewal Wheat Ridge issued bonds for projects within the Kipling I-70 urban renewal area, which you see up here on the map. It's, it's our biggest and newest urban renewal area, but it's generating quite a bit of property tax increment because of all the projects that have happened up there. So the Urban Renewal Authority is using that property tax increment to pay back the bonds that they issued, 37.5 million. And we are excited that it's getting a lot of public projects done that we could not budget for in the past. Several, the Renewal Wheat Ridge paid off several projects themselves before they transferred money to us, but they, they had a loan for the Clear Creek Crossing project in 5 million, $5 million. They paid that off with the proceeds from the bond at a much lower interest rate. And then all the improvements to the Golds marketplace also came from these bonds. But the rest of the funds, as Ally mentioned earlier, are being transferred to the city, because the city is managing the rest of the projects, which we'll talk about here in a few minutes. And I guess I'm turning it over to Lauren to talk about the first set of projects.
So we've got projects in each area of the urban renewal area that you're pretty familiar with. You'll recall that most CIP projects go through three phases, design, then right-of-way acquisition, then construction, and we have projects in each of those phases. So in the Applewood area, you know Youngfield and 32nd is a major gateway for us, and especially with a lot of the private investment happening at Clear Creek Crossing and Applewood Village Shopping Center. So to complement those private investments, we'll continue in '23 to advance the projects that we've got in the public realm. CDOT has been completing their bridge replacement at I-70 and 32nd, and so we're going to follow behind them in 2023, advancing the design of the landscape, lighting, fencing, and signage at the 32nd Avenue Bridge. That's that sort of aerial view there. And then we'll also be advancing the design phase for bike and pet improvements under the bridge heading west, and then also along Youngfield. The 2023 budget includes $700,000 to support those projects. And then moving to the Kipling area, we are going to see a few more investments made possible by the urban renewal bond. So the construction phase will be for the 38th and Kipling intersection improvement, where we're adding double left lanes to 38th Avenue approaches and making pedestrian enhancements. So we'll have $20, $22 actually carrying into '23 for that. And in future years, an additional 5 million is allocated to enhance that I-70 and Kipling improvement project, likely '20, '25 or later. That depends a little on CDOT's timing, but we did observe that they've added that to their 10-year plan. So it feels slightly more certain than it did before. And then this area has also got about $4.4 million in the '23 budget, but most of that will go to the Recreation Center. Turn it to Karen.
And the bond will fund several repair projects at the Recreation Center, including replacing mechanical equipment on the roof, repairing the roof, repairing the parking lot, repairing the bridge in the entry drive that spans over Lena Gulch, and replacing the sign with an electronic message board. Back to Lauren.
Thank you. And then the third big area for the Urban Renewal Bond Fund is by the station, the Wheat Ridge Ward Community Rail Station. So in 2023, the budget includes $1.5 million for right-of-way acquisition that's associated with the pedestrian bridge and the plaza and trail that connects the area south of the tracks to the station. Grant funding through the Dr. Kraut Tip Process was awarded, as you know, to assist in funding some of those improvements. And then $9.5 million looking forward into '24 is budgeted for the construction of that bridge, trail, and plaza.
Thank you, Lauren. And so that was the Urban Renewal, Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Fund. Now we're going to move on to major special funds, including Open Space and Conservation Trust, and I'll turn it over to Karen for those.
Thank you, Patrick. So as a reminder, the Open Space Fund is a restricted fund, and it's funded by the half-cent sales tax per capital allotment through Jefferson County Open Space for the purpose of acquiring, developing, and maintaining open space and park properties within the city of Wheat Ridge. It is important to note that the Open Space Fund includes restricted and unrestricted funds. Our restricted funds are connected to the Green at 38th, as well as future Ward TOD projects. In the Open Space Fund, also known as Fund 32, with a beginning fund balance of approximately 3.5 million, the available funds in 2023 are projected to be approximately 8.6 million. Our projected revenues for 2023 are approximately 5.2 million, and our major revenue sources are a transfer of American Rescue Plan dollars in the amount of 1.7 million. Projected grant funding is approximately $400,000, which includes two Jefferson County Open Space Trails partnership grants totaling approximately $330,000 for the Clear Creek Trail improvements and to supplement the Tabor Lake project. We just learned that we received that one. And actually, since this budget was created, we now know that the award will far exceed what was budgeted, so that's exciting. And a community-first foundation grant in the amount of $50,000 for the expansion of Happiness Gardens. Other revenue sources include the Jefferson County Open Space Tax in the amount of 1.6 million, and Parkland Dedication Fees in the amount of approximately $700,000, most of which is unrestricted, but $70,000 is restricted for transit-oriented development. So looking at 2023 projected expenditures, they are approximately $6.3 million and include $3.4 million for the Green at 38th. And you're all very familiar with this project, but essentially, it's in collaboration with the Jefferson County School District with a vision of creating a flexible and safe gathering space that can be used for community events, concerts, and festivals, while also providing a physical buffer and separation from the school space. And as I think you're all aware, Arcaterra is working on final design right now. So other projects in the Open Space Fund include approximately $2.3 million for park maintenance projects. The majority of this dollar amount is associated with ARPA funds, and we've talked about those in previous meetings, so I won't go into too much detail. But the three previously approved ARPA-funded projects that reside within the Open Space budget are the Tabor Lake Trail, the replacement of the Panorama tennis courts, and the Fruit Dale Pour-in-Place playground surfacing. $250,000 is dedicated or designated for the replacement of backstops, fences, and dugouts at Panorama Park. $200,000 is budgeted to demolish the house that we acquired earlier this year on Gray Street at Randall Park and construct a second community garden. $50,000 is identified for the replacement of the dugout backstop and ballfield fence at Stites Park. $30,000 is budgeted for the replacement of the fence at Louise Turner Park, and $15,000 is budgeted for the replacement of the fence at Louise Turner Park, and 15,000 is budgeted to improve the restrooms at Panorama Park. Additionally, it's important to note that this budget funds nine full-time positions. And now I will move on to the Conservation Trust Fund. So the Conservation Trust Fund, or CTF, is a restricted fund, and per Colorado Constitution, the Conservation Trust Fund receives 40% of the net proceeds of the Colorado Lottery. These funds are distributed on a quarterly per capita basis to municipalities, counties, and other eligible entities for parks, recreation, and open space purposes. CTF funds are used for new projects as well as maintenance projects. So with our beginning fund balance approximately $400,000, our 2023 project available funds are approximately $800,000. Estimated revenues are approximately $400,000, and estimated expenditures are approximately $670,000. And that includes $600,000 for new recreation facility projects. It's important to note that we, for the next few years, we plan to prioritize taking care of our existing assets. So we are investing quite a bit of money into repair and replacement this year. Of the $600,000, we budgeted 50,000 as capital reserve for emergency repairs, which is something we do every year. Therefore, the 550,000 earmarked for various improvement projects to maintain our existing facilities include the Recreation Center lap pool resurfacing, Anderson Park leisure pool resurfacing, treadmill replacements at the Recreation Center, pool chlorinator replacement at the Recreation Center, Anderson Pool water slide gel coat, and more. Very exciting stuff, riveting. We have 50,000 budgeted for park maintenance projects, and specifically, that's focusing on the replacement of the water line from the Anderson Building to the park shops. The projected ending fund balance is approximately $150,000. And now I'll turn it back to Patrick.
Thank you, Karen. The last fund we will talk about this evening is the 2E Bond Fund. And as Ally mentioned earlier, there's not much to this fund anymore except payment of the debt service on these bonds. We, again, just as a reminder, this, this fund was set up when voters approved a temporary half-cent sales and use tax for four projects in 2016. The tax will sunset after 12 years or when 38 and a half million is raised. Right now, we believe we're going to raise 38 and a half million in 2024. So about eight years instead of 12 years. Bonds were issued in the amount of 33 million in 2017. At this point, the only expense in 2023 in this fund is the city's 1% public art contribution for the improved Wadsworth project that you saw just last week, right? So we budgeted 384,000 in this year's budget and 100,000 in next year's budget. The remaining expenses, again, is just debt service on that bond. Here's the picture of everybody in mask, right? Is this the right one? Yeah. So I think this was from our strategic planning retreat a couple of years ago. But we want to provide to you a little bit of context on, on this budget and how we're attempting to meet your strategic priorities, based on different initiatives each department has and initiatives that city council has. So first, we'll start with each department going through specific items in their budget, but also we'll talk about our Let's Talk, Let's Talk program and our resident survey, what we heard from, from those residents, and let you know what's in our budget to meet those, those issues. So first, I will turn it over to Chief Murtha to talk about the Police Department.
Thank you, Patrick, Mr. Mayor and Council. I was afraid I wasn't going to get a chance to speak. Good evening. Some of the priorities for the Police Department really evolve based on our five priorities that I discussed with our staff. When I joined the Police Department almost three years ago now, just as a reminder, relationship-based policing is the cornerstone of what we do. We focus on training, leadership, proactivity, and a family atmosphere. And I think those are reflected in some of the requests that we have of the council this year in our budget. This year, we're asking for an e-citation system. E-citation is basically the ability to write a citation from the, from your vehicle utilizing data off of a driver's license that populates a citation and allows you to write one or multiple citations in an expedited manner. That data is then transferred over to our records department. This is a time saver. It's contact lists or generally contact, contact lists. And of course, traffic is a big issue in the city. It allows us to do more work. We also are trying to exploit our Axon systems. Axon is what we use for our body worn cameras and for a lot of our other evidence-based technology. Right now, in our, in our interview rooms, we use a different system that's due for a $17,000 upgrade. This is a most opportune time to transition over to Axon systems, because it really integrates well with the system we have. We can provide those interviews directly to the district attorney as they are needed. We talk about training and leadership, which is the, I think, the backbone of a healthy police department. We like to send our folks at all levels to different training opportunities, and we've increased the budget slightly there. And our service providers, of course, all of the wraparound service providers such as JCMH, VOI, Porchlight, we, we provide some funding for them through the Police Department. We benefit greatly, and quite frankly, we get a lot more back than we give to those different groups. So we're always looking to provide them with the funding that they require. We talked about communications personnel reorganization being fully funded. That was, that was a situation that had to be worked out. Thank you, Ally, for working that out and making sense of, of a difficult communications issue that I think we've addressed in the past. But Joanna is our new communications person, and if I've done nothing in this Police Department, hiring Joanna is probably the best thing I've done. We get a lot of positive feedback on, on hers. She tells the story of the Police Department. That's what our employees were hoping we would do. She does that, I think, in a, in a respectful manner, but she also does it with a bit of personality. Just as a side note, Joanna is going down to Colorado Springs tomorrow. She's been asked to help out with being assigned to one of the victims' families. She will help those people through an interview process tomorrow on NBC. So she is, she is very well-respected in the community after several months of being here. The reason probably why you don't hear much from me tonight is because we invest a lot in our people. It's a difficult job, and I think Patrick will talk about it in a few minutes, but human resources is where, is where the money is in the Police Department, and that's where it needs to be. This is a tough job, and it's not for everybody, but we, we appreciate the support of, of the council, and thank you for what you've, what you've given us in the past and what you hopefully will give us in the future.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to public work with Maria.
Yes, thank you. So we have several initiatives planned, exciting efforts going on in Public Works planned for 2023. So the first one is, in accordance with the council's goals of greater engagement with the community and kind of understanding some of the city processes, we are looking to implement an interactive web-based map showing the location of the city's snow plows when there is a snow event and our planned response time to priority streets. This technology can be implemented using, using GPS tracking devices on the vehicles and conveying it so that it can be observed by the public. Residents can actually type in their address to determine when their street or nearby streets will be plowed, and this increases awareness as well as safety to the traveling public. Also in 2023, an increased focus of the Public Works Department will be on asset management. So of course, Public Works is responsible for the majority of critical city infrastructure, maintaining that, inventorying that, and planning for the long-term replacement, such as stormwater, traffic signals, streets, et cetera. And in 2023, we'll be undertaking an electronic evaluation of the pavements and actually assigning a rating. Using ground penetrating radar, we'll assign a score between 0 and 100, and 0 being the worst, 100 being the best, to achieve actual rating of each street segment. And then we'll get an overall score for the entire pavement network to then determine how much more we need to invest to keep it at that level, or if we want to go to a higher level. For example, it may come back that our streets are about a 50 or 60, and which would be considered a fair condition. Do we want to go higher? So that will be a policy discussion with council, and will help us really start to look at, again, not only corrective maintenance for those lower-rated streets, but also keeping those relatively good ones in good condition. At the same time as we collect that data, we can also collect the, all of the sign inventory at the same time and update that as well. So we'll basically get both of those with one effort. The city's traffic signals lack proper communication or warnings and functions. And so we, as Lauren mentioned earlier, we are exploring a new communication system that will allow for better monitoring and quicker response to issues. And then as a result, it changes to the State 1-1 Locate Program. We have recently purchased a new software that will allow more effective response to the increased number of utility locate requests that we receive. So anything that the city owns that is within the public right-of-way, similar to Excel, or our water and sewer systems, if there's any underground stormwater, fiber optics that are part of the traffic signal systems, any city-owned streetlights, we have to locate those so that they don't get cut accidentally with anybody digging within the right-of-way. So that is a, it's an ongoing and increasing effort within the department, and we'll be implementing that new software in Q1 of 2023. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be updating that stormwater master plan, and then also we'll be evaluating upgrades or changes to our existing fueling system. Right now, all of our vehicles actually are fueled down at the city shop, and we may be, there's obviously costs associated with that in terms of maintaining those tanks, keeping them safe, creating spill prevention efforts there. And so we're evaluating that or some other system potentially as we move forward. And finally, one of our major efforts will be to become nationally accredited through the American Public Works Association as, in recognizing our organization to go through that accreditation process, which we're hoping to complete in 2023.
Thank you, Maria. Karen, Parks and Rec?
The majority of our truly exciting projects fall within the Open Space Fund, in the Conservation Trust Fund, and in new positions, which we will talk about in a little bit. However, there are a few exciting initiatives in the general fund that I'd like to mention. One, we've also discussed before, as an ARPA-funded project, the Prospect Park Aeration is budgeted in the general fund for 2023. And this is funding for restoration, enhancement, and expansion of the wildlife habitat in that area where our native species currently struggle and biodiversity is in decline. It will allow for the purchase and install of two nano-bubble generators at Prospect Lake, as well as a contract with a professional water quality contractor for three years of nutrient remediation, fishery assessment, invasive species monitoring, and algae control. So that's pretty exciting, actually, to our PFO team.
I'm really excited that we got the word nano-bubble into the budget.
Me too, me too. And the Parks, Forestry, and Open Space Team has requested a UTV as it provides the ability to reach the smaller areas in the Green Belt quickly. Also, a stump grinder allows for our in-house forestry team to efficiently manage stumps without needing contractor assistance. The furniture at Anderson Pool has not been replaced since 2010, so it's time for a refresh. And finally, the last thing I wanted to mention, it's not a large budget item at all, but we are excited that the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association is now offering an unlimited organizational membership. So in the past, we've budgeted these memberships in different cost centers for our employees, and we budgeted for about 20 employees, and now it's a benefit to all of the employees in our department. And again, our budget didn't increase by much, but we moved all of those from different cost centers to one place centralized in the budget. And it's just a clear commitment to employee training and educational opportunities. And now I'll pass it to Lauren.
Thank you. So again, like Karen, the CIP and bond projects that we talked about earlier constitute a lot of our engineering division workload. So from a general fund perspective, engineering expenses are fairly minimal. For the building division, as you know, we use Charles Abbott and Associates to support that service. And so in 2023, we expect to extend that contract with them. They've done a great job. And we've budgeted 1.3 million for building division services next year, and we'll continue to refine some of our processes with their support. All three divisions, engineering, building, and planning, are involved in development review in some capacity and the processing of applications. So we have a significant portion of staff resources dedicated to that. Clear Creek Crossing still has a lot yet to go, 44th and Kipling, and infill sites really throughout the city. Despite construction and labor costs and interest rates, our development pipeline really remains pretty full. And then finally, we've been doing a lot of small-area plans over the last few years. We did 38th, Lutheran, 44th. So one of the most exciting projects, I think, for us in the planning division in '23 is the update of the comprehensive plan. Our current comprehensive plan was adopted in October of 2009, so it's almost 13 years old, which is considered ready for an update. As I think you know, many of you know, Wheat Ridge 101 now knows, the comprehensive plan articulates a community's values and long-range vision. Usually, it's a 20-year planning horizon, and it will need to include a transportation component to make sure we're making strategic investments that align with the private development trends that we're seeing. It will serve as the foundation for future policy decisions, for future code amendments, and it involves a lot of public engagement. So all of our planning staff, it'll be sort of an all hands on deck, and we will be looking to our other departments and divisions to support, because really, no topic is off the table. When you do a comp plan, it's really comprehensive. So that effort is frequently led by a consultant team, and to kick us off, in 2023, we've included $400,000 in the planning division budget.
Thanks, Lauren. And that's a great segue into the next item in City Manager's Office's Economic Development Study. Any good comprehensive plan does have a chapter or a section on economic development, and so this will complement that study for that plan. But the city's been quite successful over the last decade in attracting and diversifying the city's retail commercial base. But feedback was received from City Council during City Manager's performance evaluation that a more strategic approach to economic development might be warranted. So we have budgeted $100,000 in next year's budget. And again, as I mentioned, that will complement the 400,000 for the comprehensive plan. So we hope to start the economic development study first, then, then move into the comp plan. Mary Ann?
All right. The city's homeless navigation program is continuing to have a really great effect on the community, especially now that we have our housing navigator onboard, who started with us in July. To date, we have secured 42 folks into secured permanent housing and 17 into transitional housing. We were just talking today about what we would do internally to celebrate once we've gotten 100 people housed. So it's very exciting. For next year, we've budgeted just over 88,000 in operational expenses, which is split between what we call stabilization funds. So that's like moving kits, vital docs, security deposits, and then bridge housing. And so that helps to what we call, like, bridge the gap for folks who maybe are looking, have a new place that the rent, that their, their rental starts at the beginning of the month, and they just need a couple of weeks before their, their new housing is available, or maybe they've started a job and they just need a couple of months to save so that they can get their security deposit in place. And so that is the funding that we have available there. And then just by providing these places stay, we really are just helping to really safely and seamlessly help people transition into more permanent stable housing.
Thanks, Mary Ann. And just to touch on cyber initiatives for next year. So we did add funding to the 2023 budget to sort of add capacity to our IT security program. We've learned a lot. So 75,000 is budgeted for endpoint monitoring, detection, response, and mitigation. So that program was actually loaded on every single device, including yours, your computers, back when we were scanning devices. And so we've budgeted funds to continue that. If a threat is, so this, this program is actually monitored by a third party, and then if a threat is detected, the third party alerts off immediately so that the system can be isolated and then shut down. This kind of system is now a best practice against cybersecurity threats, and frankly, would likely have saved our bacon had we had it back in August. We also budgeted 55,000 for tier-one contracted help desk support. We went back and forth between asking council for a position, and we've decided that in 2023, we'd actually like to try a contractor. So this would be help desk, help 24/7, 365 days a year, to sort of tackle those initial issues that come up, allowing a issues that come up, allowing existing staff more bandwidth to spend on, you know, patching and updates, scanning for threats, responding to alerts. And then what we, we plan to do next year is sort of evaluate the efficacy of all of these programs for a more comprehensive request in 2024. We'd like to start there. Thanks, over to Lauren.
Thank you. So the Let's Talk program, as you know, we sort of created that from a blank slate, and we are past the halfway point, so we've completed six neighborhood blitzes, and by the end of next year, we'll have completed the remaining four neighborhoods. And what it's done is allowed us not only to get resident feedback on what programs they maybe don't know about, but also to inform some budget priorities. So common themes continue in all of our neighborhoods to be, among other things, neighborhood traffic, code enforcement, and community cleanup. So to, in the '23 budget, we've continued that trend from '22 to increase resources for both the dumpster and cleanup days and also the neighborhood traffic management program. And then a lot of our CIP projects are really aligned with the feedback we're hearing from Let's Talk, so 35th directly came out of a Let's Talk neighborhood blitz, and 38 West and the Youngfield Investments are both really highly aligned with the resident feedback that we're getting, which is giving us an immediate community base to reach out to for the engagement phases of those projects.
The resident survey is typically completed every two years, and our most recent survey was completed in 2021, so we will be due for our next resident survey next year. The survey consistently reviews areas where we can make improvements, where maybe it needs a little extra support, and also where we can make investments in areas that our residents really love and value, and to make sure that we can continue to, to get that support from our community. So last year, we increased our Public Works Street Maintenance Budget by a million to $3 million, and that was specifically due to our resident survey feedback. And as Maria mentioned, this year, we are budgeting that same effort, same number, in an effort to, to really set a new street maintenance standard in the city. Additionally, what we heard in the 2021 survey is that crime prevention and policing services are really important for our residents, and so we saw also that snow removal services and recreation center facilities were of high importance, and people really love them. And so we really want to invest in those as well. So a lot of this is repeating what you've heard from the chief and Maria and Karen, but it's really showing that what we do is we listen to the residents, we look at the survey, and we really hear what, what our folks have to say. And so aligning with that resident survey, in this, in 2023, we will be implementing a new e-citation program, adding an additional snowplow to the fleet, and adding maintenance and capital investment of our Parks and Recreational Facilities.
So we do have a, a separate fund for fleet replacement as well, and in 2023, we anticipate spending just under $1 million on nine specific vehicles. As Mary Ann just mentioned, the additional Public Works snowplow, four replacement vehicles within the Parks and Rec Department, as well as five police department vehicle replacements. So our criteria is established in a policy where we use a combination of either years of service or hours of usage and mileage to help guide as to when we should replace vehicles. For example, police patrol cars are typically replaced every five years or 100,000 miles. And although several vehicles were also slated for replacement in 2022, many of those were actually ordered, but then those orders were canceled due to supply chain issues. So we have, we typically use state contracts to purchase those, and when we put the orders in several months ago, they're now telling us they're just not available from the, from the dealers. So that will be a future ongoing effort into 2023, where we'll have to place those orders again and potentially hopefully get them this year. But meanwhile, we're continuing to keep those other vehicles in the fleet with higher maintenance costs, the more likelihood for breakdowns, and ultimately lower resale values once we turn those back in and sell off those older vehicles. Turn it back to Mary Ann.
As you all know, the city is receiving historic and transformative funding through the American Rescue Plan Act for ARPA, and just over two payments, the city will be receiving a little over $7.8 million. While CARES was designated to respond to the immediate financial impacts of the pandemic, the purpose of ARPA is to look a little bit more strategically at the needs of the community. So if you look here at the total column, it shows the funding recommended, recommendation approved by council in April of this year. The 2021, 2022 column shows the estimated amount per category expected to be spent in 2021 and 2022 from the ARPA funds, and the 2023 column shows the amount budgeted per initiative. As mentioned earlier, we expect to have about a little over $4 million left to spend from ARPA funds at the end of 2023, which we are restricting for those purposes in the fund balance. So in 2023, you see COVID mitigation, that includes things like the patrol car sterilization, PPE, hybrid meeting equipment, assistance to households, so that would be homeless navigation, food insecurity, contributing to community table for behavioral health care, we are supporting Jefferson Center general community programs, as well as the Wheat Ridge High School clinician. At this point in time, two community mental health workshops on mental health are scheduled in the new year, January 26th and February 23rd at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, so more information to come on that. For preventing and responding to violence, we've put $155,000 to offset telephone reporting unit staff and funding for victim services. For parks projects, we have 1.7 million in for the Panorama Park tennis court replacement, Fruitdale play surface installation, and Prospect water quality and Taylor Lake trail work. And then overall, really, we're just thrilled to see what this money is going toward, and we're excited to see what, what it'll do for our community.
Moving on to staffing and benefits, we'll just sort of touch on staffing as well as, yeah, medical benefits mostly. So this budget requests, requests quite an infusion in our people. So that's 11.5 in full-time employees, and we'll go ahead and discuss those by department now, but I do just want to, looking at Chief, make a comment that in that 11.5 FTE, which for Wheat Ridge is, that's a, that's a big ask this year, but we have some good stories to tell of what, what we want to accomplish with those positions. You won't see any police department positions in 2023, and that is because we are struggling to fill every single role that we have, including councils have always authorized six over-hires in the police department because it takes, gosh, a year, really, to get a, a police department, a sort of a new officer through the academy and through field training. We, we try to overhire so that as we have attrition throughout the year, we have officers ready to go. We don't ask you for that money. We actually fund over-hires and salary savings. But this was the first budget that I've, I've worked on, and while we're actually doing really well compared to our neighbors, right, Chief, on sort of retention, this is the first budget I've worked on where we've had vacancies in our PD. I'm going to add to that.
Yeah. In part, we, we've asked for officers over the last several budgets, and you've been kind enough to give us those positions. So we've not been able to meet those goals 100%. We're still above where we were when I started here, which is amazing compared to some of the staffing shortages that you'll see in other agencies and our peer agencies around us, which is kind of a testament to the, to the mentality of the people we hire here. They're, they're dedicated to this job, and they, they stick with it, and they understand that, you know, this is, this is a place that respects the job, the work that they do, but we won't lower our standards, so we won't hire people who are less than. And in doing that, we, we are not like some of the big agencies that will have changed their standards, quite frankly, have done that at the academy and other places. We just won't do it. So we're going to keep good people here, we're going to make sure that our officers work with good people standing next to them, that's important to them, and so we don't have that. But we do have the flexibility of over-hires. So knowing right now that we have four people lined up for our next academy class, which starts in January, there's only one other opportunity for us unless we decide to go outside of our current structure to a different academy, there's only one other class that we could hire. So we know really upfront what we have in front of us, and we know that we'll lose people through attrition. This is an employee market, and quite frankly, you know, think about this almost every day, why is this a difficult market? Well, housing here is tough, we all know that. It's tough for, for newer officers to, to afford a house in this area and a school, so it's, it's a tough market, basically. But we're, we're doing a good job, I think, of attracting really qualified people. Since I've, since I've arrived, the people that, you know, have been hired since I, I got here are still with us 100%. So we haven't lost those folks. You know, there are always going to be reasons why people need to move on, but we're in a good spot, and we're really happy about that. I think we're at 85 for 87 without including the current academy, that's three people that you'll get to meet on the 12th, and one that is, came directly to us from Arapahoe, Arapahoe Community College's community post-certified program there. So you'll meet four new people on December 12th, 21st or 12th, depending on how I read Mary Ann's hands, 12th. And I think, you know, again, I, I hope you're impressed by, by the quality of the people we're hiring, so you'll continue to see that, and it's important to us. So that's kind of a synopsis on that.
Chief, talk about the two true positions that were hired mid-year this year.
Yeah, the, the true positions, you know, we, we took our time to hire those folks, and we found two really qualified people. One of them was in our records department, had worked in, has worked in customer service his entire career, not a law enforcement background, but is exactly what we're looking for, somebody that can talk to people over the phone, help our, help our folks out, worked in records, so he understands our systems, and, and those folks are up and running. We have two people who are in there right now, and they're doing a great job. What they do is take the, the calls that really don't require an officer's response, that don't require a, a lot of evidence or intervention for officers, they provide great customer service to people who just want to report a lost or stolen cell phone because they need that number to get a replacement or whatever. So it, it allows our officers on the street to spend a little bit more time in relationship-based policing. So thank you for that, it's making a difference, we're starting to see it, it's really just in its infancy, but they're, they're taking a bunch of calls now and starting to take more and more, and I think that, you know, that just shows the creativity of this, of the people in this department to look for solutions outside of just hiring sworn people. We emphasize that the people who wear this badge, their time has to be more valuable. We can't have them doing things that we can have other people do, we need them to do the things that require the, the level of training that they're at. So that has been exponentially a good idea that has come to fruition, so thank you to everybody who's participated in that.
Thanks, Chief, for chat, for speaking to all that. So just the 2023 proposed budget request, like I said, an additional 11.5 positions, taking the city's FTE, or full-time equivalents, to 270.25. So we're going to kind of chat through each one, and then if you'd like to look at, excuse me, the five-year staffing plan, that's on page 240 of your book, and in that plan, you'll see sort of the positions that we're contemplating over the next five years, which, which do include several in the police department. So in sort of city administration, so thinking about the Administrative Services Department in City Manager's Office, we're asking for two positions, a risk management coordinator that I'll chat about, and then a management analyst that Mary Ann will chat about. So the city of Wheat Ridge doesn't have a risk management specialty, a risk management specialist, and it's, and we are now big enough and sophisticated enough that we need someone to manage the program. So this position will serve as the primary point of contact for risk management, will report directly to me. In 2021, we experienced 43 workers' comp claims and received 188 property casualty incident reports. So currently, that's me and the executive assistant that are, are working on that. And I'll tell you, it's actually been really challenging to recruit an executive assistant who has any experience or frankly desire to do that kind of work. It's, it's, it's different, it's a different kind of work, so we really do need to add capacity there. You know, basically by pulling that responsibility away from formerly Amber's position, we'll, we'll, we'll gain capacity in both areas. So this position will administer the property casualty and liability program with SERSA, administer the workers' comp program with Pinnacle, excuse me, coordinate with human resources and workers' comp claims, and our return-to-work program, manage all claims, coordinate with city departments on the property casualty program. So I know Chief's nodding, there's a lot of need there. I think this is, this position is going to help everyone, and I can't quantify this, but I am looking forward to showing you how this position saves, saves their own salary, frankly, in, in a combination of premium, premium savings and seeking restitution from folks that frankly damage our property. I think there's just so much potential here for us to really dial in this program and do a great job. So they'll coordinate the city's safety program, which is made up of, you know, employees from across the city, but could really use a leader, analyze trends to determine employee training needs, monitor incidents for possible accountability issues, work with insurance carriers, so work on our renewals, our, you know, our claims and our audits, and then, again, find ways to reduce costs.
We've heard from everyone so far, we're, we have so much investment on community engagement, neighborhood services, and really just quality of life here in Wheat Ridge, and so with such an active and engaged city council, we really do need additional staffing capacity in the City Manager's Office to help to implement all of these programs, and so this management analyst position will really help to support city council and city manager initiatives, and that will include things like our community partner grant program, Race and Equity Task Force, our legislative review and tracking, and, and really other neighborhood support projects, and so just adding a little extra capacity to the City Manager's Office.
All right. This is, this is the exciting part for Parks and Rec, and a little bit different. So we're gonna, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some outside-of-the-box thinking this year. To start, we are requesting a volunteer and event coordinator, and this really has a lot to do with the shift in responsibilities in local work. So the Parks and Recreation Department is interested in taking on full responsibility for citywide events. So currently, the way it's been historically is that local works oversees some events, the city oversees some events, we coordinate together on some events, but we would take the majority of those with, I believe, the exception of Ridge Fest, as that still aligns with their future mission. Let's see, so we take on things like the holiday celebration, the Easter egg hunt performances in the park, ties and tiaras, trunk, trunk or treat, movies in the park, as well as other community events. In addition to these events, this individual in this position would be responsible for developing and administering a robust volunteer program citywide, so not just within the Parks and Recreation Department, but all city departments, and providing oversight to the special events permitting process, which currently lives with Brandon, our, our Grant and Special Projects Administrator, who has a ton on his plate, so this would be really helpful to take that component off of his plate. Secondly, we are requesting a garden coordinator position, so I think everybody knows that our Regenerate Wheat Ridge program has been extremely successful and award-winning. So in order to manage the project and programming needs related to that, to our existing community garden, our, we, as I mentioned earlier, we received a Community First Foundation grant in the amount of $50,000 to expand Happiness Garden, so overseeing that project, and in addition, the new community garden that will be going into Randall Park, this is really something that has expanded, and we want to continue to expand within our community, and so we truly need somebody in a full-time capacity to provide the oversight to the projects, the programming, and the garden maintenance. The next request is a conversion of a facility assistant from a variable or part-time position to a full-time position. So currently, the frontline staff at the recreation center includes one full-time facility coordinator, one full-time facility assistant, and one 20-hour variable or part-time facility assistant. So this request would move that one 20-hour variable position to a full-time position. So a second full-time facility assistant would offer better stability at our frontline management level and over, and provide overall customer service at the highest level. It would provide extra coverage for opening and closing the facility and give the full-time facility coordinator more flexibility to move to the back office and concentrate on some of their other responsibilities during a portion of their shift.
And finally, the wild outside-of-the-box request that we have, I think everybody is aware that we have a nationwide shortage, shortage on lifeguards. This is not unique to Wheat Ridge, but we've decided to get creative. So with the lifeguard shortages in Wheat Ridge, they have resulted in pool capacity reduction, reduced hours of operation, we've canceled swimming lessons and other programs, we did not have swimming lessons this summer, and that continues, and that's a big deal for, for-
And that's a big deal for me and for our community. And we have to do that all in order to maintain a safe environment. So these positions, we're requesting five head lifeguard positions that would be full-time positions. And it would help mitigate closures and ensure that our residents in Wheat Ridge of all ages and demographics can fully benefit from our aquatic programs and services. So the first stage in the prevention of drowning is learning to swim. So again, that's incredibly important that we can begin to offer those services again. Due to staffing shortages, we have not been able to offer regular swim lessons. And not only is that detrimental to our community, but there's a loss of revenue associated with that. So this summer alone, that amounts to about $45,000 in revenue. Closing the recreation center pool has resulted in a significant drop in service provided by our department. And adding full-time employees in place of variable employees would reduce the number of service blackouts caused by our staffing shortages. While there's certainly a cost associated with adding five full-time position, this change would also reduce our part-time salary budget by approximately $191,000. And now on to Maria. All right?
Thank you. So Public Works is requesting two additional positions in the 2023 budget. The first is for an additional maintenance worker position. And this is intended to increase or to assist with the ever-growing demand for public works services, including citywide graffiti removal, asphalt patching, snow and ice control, street sweeping, street markings, and storm sewer cleaning. And that's because we're increasing the overall mileage on city streets. So if you can imagine all the additional miles over at Clear Creek Crossing, as well as up in the Ward Station area. And not just one lane in each direction, but over in Clear Crossing, that's essentially five lane miles. A lot of those streets are very wide. And so it takes a lot more effort than, and we're adding more miles overall. Similarly, over the last few years, we've had our requests for assistance in different areas has increased, such as placing speed trailers, traffic counts, installation of street banners, as well as assistance with various public events and festivals. And most importantly, this position will provide us with an additional staff person to assist with snow plowing and snow clearing. So right now, we have just barely enough staff to staff three eight-hour shifts on this snow event like we had this last Wednesday and Thursday. People were working around the clock. And we can't, we have no capacity to allow people to take vacation, to have a sick day. So people often will come in or will have the street supervisor jump in a truck in order to maintain those current levels of service. So this will give us that one additional person to have a little bit more flexibility there with people's schedules. And then secondly, a traffic technician will allow us, again, to respond to increased levels of service. We have added four new signals over the last several years. And just all of the work associated with the signals, as well as sign maintenance, repair and replacement, as well as work associated with, again, our work orders and the response to those different events. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. And so just to wrap up the staffing section, I'll just chat a little bit about compensation and benefits. So we continue to implement our Pay for Performance management plan that we've talked about. But I'll say that this budget does infuse more than we have in recent years in our people next year. We are requesting about 1.1 million through this budget for performance increases, market increases, and officer step wage increases. So that's an increase of 10% over the 2022 budget. We did complete another pay analysis, a wage analysis this year. We typically do that every two years, but we, you know, as we've talked about, the market is so volatile, it's tough to recruit. And we really do need to recruit and retain good people. So that's our request. And then some exciting news that we've talked about in the past. You know, we're switching to a new benefits provider. You all will have seen that yourself through open enrollment. In 2023, we are moving to the Colorado Employer Benefit Trust. It's a pool similar to SERSA from the liability side. This is a pool of public employers for benefits. Because of our size, we struggle to be, we have struggled in recent years to offer choice in medical providers. And joining this pool will allow us to do that. So next year, we'll be offering both Kaiser and United Healthcare to our employees. Again, retaining Delta Dental, switching to VSP for IMED, and then changing over to life and disability insurances with comparable coverages. But the great news there is there really isn't much of an increase in premium. It's slight compared to '22. It's about a 1% increase compared to '22. But had we stayed where we were, we would have been looking at at least a 5% increase for both employer and employee. So we're really excited and, you know, we're excited about migrating to the trust. So thanks so much for that and I'll turn it back to Patrick.
Great.
Bring us home.
Thank you. We're almost done. Only 66 more slides. So looking ahead, just want to talk a little bit about some fiscal opportunities and fiscal challenges. A lot of these are fairly similar to what we went over last year. But we do, as I mentioned at the very beginning of this presentation, we have a lot of great opportunities in this community still and very pleased about that. And you all should be very pleased and proud. You know, we have, we're still diversifying and growing our tax base with new and exciting projects. First of all, the Clear Creek Crossing project, we talked a lot about tonight. It's not complete yet. So there's a lot of revenues that will be generated from that project that are not in our budget. We may, I don't know if we'll see anything in 2023, probably '24, before we'll start seeing actual some sales tax. So that, we have that to look forward to. The Wheat Ridge Ward Station, it's growing as we speak, mainly residential at this point. But I do foresee potentially some more business growth and potential some small commercial development up there. The Wadsworth Corridor, I think once that project is done, that's really going to catalyze some redevelopment of some of those properties along Wadsworth, hopefully with some sales checks generation along there. Then Ridge at 38, as I mentioned earlier tonight. We're just still seeing that grow and blossom with some exciting opportunities for different entertainment and restaurant choices for our residents and increase in sales tax base. Municipal bonds, I mentioned, again, we mentioned the renewal Wheat Ridge bonds this evening. We're getting $37.5 million worth of projects done. Infrastructure projects that, just something we could never fit into our CIP budget. So we should be very happy about that. Taking advantage of our urban authority, we've really built that up over the last couple of decades. We're seeing that property tax increment that is used as a great tool. And then our 2E tax that we, again, talked about earlier, that's set to expire soon. We're going to be talking about that more next year and doing some polling, looking at a potential extension of that temporary tax and maybe another bond and more public infrastructure projects in the city. And the one last thing, the Kipling Ridge loan. We had a loan, Urban Renewal Authority had a loan for that project. It is set to, I think, 2023 will be the last payment on that loan. So that's going to free up about $600,000 in expenditures in the general fund starting in 2024. So that project will be fully paid off and generating revenues and coming back to the general fund. That's two new snowplows, yeah. So those are some of the fiscal opportunities that I see in the near future. And as we mentioned, there's still, there's definitely some challenges facing us. And as Maria mentioned, we'll talk about those here in a few weeks. One of them is funding Phase Two of Wadsworth. Prices just came in, can't even say substantial, I don't know. Really, much higher than anticipated and expected. I think that's just a sign of the times. So we need to really think strategically about that. And we're going to bring back some options to you on how to fund Phase Two. Inadequacies of our municipal facilities, this is always on here and we are addressing that. We're right in the middle of a facilities assessment. Maria's taken that on. We should, we met with them a few days ago and talked about some bigger picture ideas. They hope to come back, I think, late spring with a report to put a plan together on addressing our facilities. Supply chain issues, we've mentioned a little bit tonight. We had some vehicles that never showed up, got canceled. They kind of said, tough luck and you're going to have to pay the new pricing. So we're still struggling with that just a bit. Inflation starting to come down a little bit, but it's still, I think, 7.2, I think, maybe in Colorado. So still a low high and we're seeing that in pricing of a lot of our expenditures. Hiring and retention, we mentioned, it's getting expensive. But as both Chief and Ally mentioned, we need to invest in our employees. We're a service organization. That's our largest expense. It saves us money to hire the right folks and to retain them. Homelessness issues, Mary Ann mentioned, that's, there's an expense to that. There's community pride to that. There's a lot of issues to that that we're still addressing. And there may be some long-term expenses with that. We had a meeting, I guess, just today with the region on our navigation centers and talking about how we're going to move forward with that. And then recession, is there, you know, is there a recession coming in the next couple of years? Indicators, it's kind of a mixed review on that. If that's, if it's going to happen and when it's going to happen and how bad it could be if it does happen. So we need to be keeping an eye on that and making sure we're being somewhat frugal in our finances. So with that, I'll turn it over. We'll wrap it up with talking about our budget process and the next steps coming up and we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. So get right forward. So let's just remind everybody how we get here. How do we get here? So you heard from Mary Ann and the Community Partner Grant Program folks, we call them the CPGPs. On July 25th, they presented recommendations to council for the community partners in the amount of $160,000. So that's all the sort of nonprofits that the city funds. So that's all included here, everything that you consented to there. You heard from our partners. Why have that next? I'm so sorry. We launched, we had two separate, sort of called out on the agenda, public speaking, public opportunities for comment earlier in the summer. So that was on August and September. We last year launched the WhatsApp Wheat Ridge feedback page on the budget. And our vision is that we're just going to continue that page. There'll always be a budget page on WhatsApp Wheat Ridge that will sort of add to and ask different questions depending on the year. So this page will stay live. We didn't have any specific initiatives this year. We asked people for their ideas and we asked them to share their comments and questions. And we got over 140 visits with what we call 42 informed visitors, meaning they clicked through items on the, within the budget project, within the project, and four engaged visitors, which means they actually contributed feedback. We heard, could we please get more staffing in the building and permitting department? Could we create, and then two folks said, can we create a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly Wheat Ridge, which, as you've heard us talk about in our capital projects tonight, working, that will be, we do plan to work on that. You also heard from the, our partners, our friends. I like your shaking hands image, Patrick. That's what that is. Good job. On August 15th, where, again, you consented to provide $253,000 to Local Works, $90,000 to the Wheat Ridge Business District, and then $125,000 to the Carnation Festival. And again, all of those are included in the 2023 proposed budget. You'll be so happy to know that this is the end of our journey together through this presentation. Maybe not. There we go. So this evening, we are asking for your consensus on the proposed 2023 budget. We'll answer your questions, of course, but we'll be asking for your consensus on this proposed budget tonight. And then because we're a little bit delayed because of, in our timing in the year because of the cyber event, we brought this to you about four weeks later than we normally would. We will be coming back next Monday, the 28th, asking you to formally adopt, take action and formally adopt the 2023 budget. And at that same time, we'll do the property tax mill levy certification as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thanks to the team up here. That concludes our presentation. Of course, we're all here for questions.
Thank you, everybody, for this robust presentation. I know that when, I just feel like we've been talking about the budget for so long already at this point and then because we had that big kind of gap in the middle. We were really, you know, running down the track, getting ready to do the presentation and then we had that cyber event. But I do want to say that I understand how hard it is to be able to, like, this is a lot of data. And so to be able to go back, recreate it, find it, put it together, present it tonight as a full budget instead of a, well, here's kind of a skinny mini until we can get more information. I'm really, really proud of all of you for putting that together and so thank you for that. I don't have any questions on the budget. I would say that this is probably, this is my seventh. And this budget thankfully addresses all of the priorities that I've had over the past couple of years. So I'm just super excited about that. One thing I would like to point out, though, is that our reserve amount, while I appreciate the fiscal conservativeness, our reserve amount is fiscally conservative. And then it's extraordinarily fiscally conservative at the end of the year because it always ends up growing. And so like, not this year, I'm not looking to try to get anybody to spend any different money than what's been presented. But next year, I most certainly will be kind of pushing back and asking for a little more money to go towards our stormwater plan once we get that plan back. And drainage, drainage is one thing that we've been talking about at this table, that I've been talking about at this table for seven years. So that's definitely a priority that I'm going to have in the next year. So I'm just giving you a little heads up on that. And thanks for all your work and hard time and hard work and your time tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, staff. Wow, I mean, if we don't appreciate the other 364 days a year, what you guys do tonight more than ever. It's just, it's great to see how the city functions and how well it functions. So a couple of things. First of all, I just want to say I'm really excited about all the investments in the aquatics as a swimmer. I'm really happy to see that and really support your aggressive hiring of lifeguards. I heard a lot of grumbles and grief this summer and I know we were not unique. In fact, I think we actually did a better job of hiring lifeguards and keeping our pools open than our neighbors. But I, we want summer 2023 to be the swimmiest summer we've had in a long time. I do have a couple of questions. On the fleet replacement, what is the city's commitment to replacing acceptable cars with EVs?
Yeah, we did a couple of electric vehicles, I think, a couple of years ago. We have not talked about those robustly. I think as new vehicles come up for replacement, we need to evaluate those because even trucks now are available in electric options. So that hasn't been a discussion point, but it will be going into the future, even for this replacement for 2023.
Great. I love to hear that because I know sustainable Wheat Ridge, that's important to them. And we are a community member of CC4CA. So I think those values, you know, I know that it's competitive to get those, but there's more and more cars out there and it feels like the right thing to do as a city. Then there was mention of much celebration over the purchase of another snowplow. Twice, I think we celebrated the snowplow twice tonight. Can we have a naming contest for it? What are we doing around just regular street sweeping maintenance? I know that that, as someone who rides their bike, like, the street maintenance schedule is a little bit of an issue. And is that something that we're looking at? I'm not asking it to show up in this year's budget, but is that something that we're looking to increase the frequency of our street sweeping?
I'm not certain what we do of our frequency right now. I apologize for that. But I think if not the frequency, at least the quality. So actually, Patrick and I just talked about this a couple of weeks ago. So making sure we get down to the curb or the edges where all the dirt and debris tends to accumulate. So a lot of our sweeping, just as we get more parking, more people are working at home, there's just more cars in the street. And so we're weaving in and out as opposed to having a good system. So one of the things we'll probably evaluate is doing temporary no parking signs to allow for a more robust cleaning effort at least one or two times a year. So that's something we're evaluating.
Okay. I do have a short list of questions here. I was excited to hear that, if I heard correctly, and most of you know my hearing's not so great right now. But is the Urban Renewal Bond, Karen, does that include rebuilding the bridge over Lena Gold?
Okay, okay. I just, yeah, yeah. And then one more small question than a bigger thing. So we talked with Patrick about this earlier today, but we are under, we're considering as a council, how to sequester the short term rental tax to go towards housing attainability in our community. And I'm just curious how that policy directive is playing out in the budget as presented, knowing that we're hoping that that's something that we're going to be able to accomplish in 2023.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel. We, and Ally and I talked about it after you and I spoke. And you were right, it used to be on the future agenda list. And I think we had taken it off because I thought we were going to have a more robust discussion tonight about it. But we did not do that. So we'll bring it back as a study session item, probably at the first of the year. But we are accounting for the short term rental revenues that we were receiving in lodgers tax and through basically today, I guess, right? From the beginning, from the inception of the, when we started collecting lodger's tax on short term rentals, which was August of last, last year, through today, we've collected about 350,000. So we're getting, we're keeping track of that. And then we'll have a policy discussion with you all. You gave us general guidance on housing and homelessness, I think, was kind of the terminology. So we want to come back and get some more specifics on exactly how we'd like to do it. But for now, we're tracking the dollars separately, and those will eventually become a restricted reserve like those other items, so that we're spending it on what you want to spend on.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. And then my last thing, Patrick, I'd also ask you about this, but last year, we had asked to sequester a certain amount of money from the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program to go specifically towards improvements around schools. And it's my understanding that those funds did not get spent this year specifically for any school projects.
They did not. We, I spoke with staff, but we had 100,000 budget in this year's budget. We're projecting to spend about 60,000 of that on Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. And there were a couple that kind of not directly, if you remember, I think I sent you the email, didn't directly impact the schools, but they were, let's see, what were they that, I think, the Dudley Street, I think, which is a route that people use to get to the high school a lot. So that's not directly related to the school, but it is one of the routes. So, so no, there were no school directed projects. But we do have 40,000 in this year's budget that we're not projecting to spend. So there's still money available if a project comes up that you have in mind.
Okay, well, what I would like to propose is that we sequester the funds from this year, as well as also sequester $30,000 next year, specifically to go towards enhancements that we're going to need to make in our community to make it easier for the kids that are rearticulating after the school closures. I think we talked about this at our last meeting, that there's a lot of concerns that in my neighborhood, Wilmer Davis kids are going to be having to cross Wadsworth. There's going to be some new travel behaviors from some of our other schools. So I'd like to make sure that we've got some some Neighborhood Traffic Management Funds set aside so that we, we as a council, talk about that here in the beginning of 2023. We've got some funds that we can maybe even put into some quick win projects to make sure that those kids have some safe routes to school.
Can you repeat those numbers? So the rest, the rest of the money that's left over this year, plus 35 from next year?
It's, I think we had sequestered 25.
25 this year.
Yeah, so 25 this year, and then let's do 25 next year, and make sure that if we can, and I guess I'm looking to council for support for that. Okay, so do I have consensus for us to carry over 25,000 from this year and to set aside 25,000 next year to make sure that we've got some some CIP or some Neighborhood Traffic Management Funds to help enhance crossings for our kids?
And a consensus noted on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Nosler back, and then Counselor, Counselor Stites.
Counselor Hulteen literally took everything off of my list, except for, I just, I did have one other piece. But I also just wanted to recognize, so appreciative of staff for all of the reasons mentioned above, but also just the real community outreach and work that's done through the Let's Talk program and having things like the budget available online for people to to make public comment for long extended amounts of time, even when we were in in distress, going through everything, being available and transparent with our community is so great. And it's really reflected in this budget. You can feel, you can feel, I feel my neighbors in this budget. So thank you. I, I also, Counselor Hulteen mentioned this, but thinking ahead about how the summer is going to play out is so great. New furniture at Anderson. I love the idea of really just making sure that our really great facilities are in good shape for another decade. And we have people who live in Wheat Ridge who utilize these facilities, but they come from other communities as well. And it's, I think, probably a good revenue source for our, our community. And just, I'm so proud of it. So thanks for that. And I love the head lifeguard idea. So great. I had one question about, like, emergency funds. You know, last, last year, we had the big winds, or I'm sorry, this year, we had that big windstorm that came through, and then we had all the tree debris. And when that happens, there's a big pile that is put at Anderson Park. And this last year, I think, you know, there was fire, it was stinky. That's in a lot of people's backyards in addition to the park. And I'm just wondering if we, we use those funds for the cleanup of those, or if there's a chipper we can get. I don't know what we can do, but if that's part of what those emergency kind of funds are for.
Yeah. And we also are working on creating, developing a plan so that we have a better process if and when that happens again, because we did utilize funds for a chipper and and that kind of thing. But every community was trying to do it at the same time, and it was really hard to secure those resources. So really, creating that plan in advance is probably the best thing. But yes, having emergency funds to do that.
Great. And it might be trees this time. It's, it's probably something down the road. But thanks. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think staff did a really great, excuse me, really great job on this. I, I really do appreciate, kind of like Counselor Nosler Beck said, that I see the public input and our council priorities in this budget. And it really shows in what you guys are asking for, for the coming year. And I think we all really appreciate that because that's, that speaks to our citizens, that they know we're actually listening. Especially looking at the, the Neighborhood Engagement Program, what we kind of envisioned off of the NRS a couple of years ago coming into this, nobody knew exactly what that was going to look like. But I think that it's, it's been a home run so far. And I know there was some pushback at the beginning, you know, we're just going to sit and listen. But we are actually getting stuff done as we're listening. And one of the reasons we didn't want it just to be the, the council people hearing it is having the staff here at firsthand, so it can actually be interpreted into actionable items, because sometimes we hear things that we don't exactly know what to do with that. So A-plus job on that. Counselor Ohm, Ms. Hutchinson and myself had a couple of opportunities individually to speak with Paige at Local Works about maybe doing a farmer's market in the next year. And she said that that would roughly be about 15,000 to get that kicked off as far as permitting and all that stuff goes. Would this be a good time to ask to maybe put that into the budget now? Or do we want to wait on that?
I, yeah, I talked to Mr. Ohm also, and we can, we can find that money if that's okay, so we don't have to amend the budget. Believe it or not, just changing $15,000 is a lot of work. But unless you have other major amendments. But yeah, I, I've talked, I've got to talk to Paige. We ran out of time at our last meeting, but I think it's a great idea, and it'd be great if we could get it going again. So we can find the 15,000 in, in something in our funds that are budgeted.
That makes it easy. I like it. Thank you very much, staff. You guys all did a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, and thank you all for all of your work towards this. I just had a couple of questions. First of all, can we have a larger discussion about the farmer's market? Because there are lots of issues around bringing a farmer's market to the community that that have to do with producers and, and how those are contracted, because there are several ways that they're contracted. So it's not, it's not quite as simple as, as it seems it should be. And so I guess, before funds are allocated, I guess I'd like, I know a lot of us have been involved. I know Counselor Hulteen and a lot of you have been involved in some different initiatives over the years to get farmer's markets here. And, and there are already a couple things going on in our community regarding farmer's markets as well. So if we could just have a larger discussion around that, I'd really appreciate. I'm not anti-farmer's market in any way, shape, or form, but just, I'd like to have a more of a robust conversation about it. The furniture at Anderson, I love that there was a couch there. All I could think of was a bunch of couches being bought and around the pool for some reason, because there was a little couch icon. And I was like, wow, couches around the pool. It's interesting. But I get it now. I just, it was just a funny.
It's moving into a leisure pool.
Yeah, it's a leisure pool. Yeah. But then I thought code enforcement doesn't allow you to have a couch on your front porch. Anyway, no, right, right. Yeah, yeah. No, I do have some serious questions as well. But the icons were fun tonight. So thank you all. Tree program, I was just curious if I could get an update from you, Karen, about, because I know we had initially put some money towards it, and then we said in the second year, we would put more money towards it. And I was just kind of curious where we're at and if that possibly needs more funds and all of the good stuff.
I was just looking at that today. So I can't tell you with exact certainty, but I want to say we had, my guess is, I think, 28 applications this year that came through. And if we spend all of the money that was requested, it would be around $35,000, which we have more than that budgeted. So I don't think we need more than that next year. I think what we need to do is just continue to market it, because I'm sure there's still certainly people in the community that don't know that that's available to them.
Well, and in the second year, I think we had talked about going, discussing both mitigation for bugs in some way, and as well as, as thinking about keeping the canopy healthy by pro trimming. I can't remember what all the words were, but all the tree guys came in, and we had that conversation, the tree people, excuse me.
So that expanded this year. We had, we had new criteria that already, yep, that's already in place.
Awesome. Is there any way we could just get a report of?
Yes.
The money spent and the requests made, just, just to understand sort of what people's needs were?
I can easily get that to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
We have 60,000 in next year's budget for the tree program.
Yeah, I think we had talked about it going to 60.
And the tree sale was also successful. I think we had more trees than we needed. So I think we'll probably order fewer next year. But it was successful.
Awesome. Awesome. And Counselor Hulteen brought up the, the tax that we are taking from the short term rentals. And I, that made me ask a couple of questions. Is that tax collected by the agencies that are reporting? So, so like, if it's Airbnb, do they take the tax and send it to you all? Or is it a personal thing, like small businesses? And then that led me to my other question that I've talked with Ally about in the past and Chris, as far as, how's the tax collection going? Because I know we hired a new person last year, and I was just kind of curious how that's going.
Sure.
Yeah, just an update on that.
Yeah, I'll start off with, to answer your question about short term rental tax collection. So initially, our code required that individuals submit their own taxes to us for their short term rentals.
And they're bad at that.
Well, it turns out they're better at that than Airbnb, because now there's been a change, and Airbnb is now remitting individual short term rental taxes directly to us. And it's really, it's, it's really challenging, because they won't provide the detail that goes with it. So we'll get a nice big check, which is great. We're not one to look gift horse in the mouth. But Airbnb's accounting won't give us individual taxpayers. So it goes to Maria. This portion goes to Chris. This person, yeah. So then the individuals still have to remit their sales taxes. So it's fine. We're working through it. We're planning to do some educational outreach, actually, in 2023, like do some both virtual and in person open houses, or sort of, you know, where educational sessions where folks can come in, meet with our really helpful staff. I hear them on the phone with them, you probably do too, all the time, just helping people through their tax returns. So there's some bumps. Our auditor is currently working with Airbnb on an assessment. It's challenging, but we're getting there. Definitely getting there. Lots of lessons learned. And then overall, the new position, I think you're referring to, in the licensing technician, Megan Schmitz, our employee of the year last year, our Action Award winner, actually. Megan's was hired to really implement council's new licensing programs. So massage, tobacco retailing, short term rental, and hotel. I say councils, this was all legislation that, what's that?
Nope.
That, that, you know, we all implemented over the last couple of years. And she's doing great. However, I think you remember, we lost a staff member last year, and Megan happened to be on board and had been learning from Carol before she passed away. And so in addition to all of that, was sort of doing regular business licensing. So that team is actually fully staffed. I've just been working with the team to add some contractual support over the very busy license renewal period that we have coming up in December, January, and February, because frankly, we want to provide great service. And the annual renewal that's required through our code of $20 business licenses, it's just a really big crunch all at the same time. Add on that ransomware attack and our, again, sort of legacy ERP system. And so we're adding a little bit more capacity so that we're providing a higher level of service.
Great.
But overall, I would say it's going well. I mean, revenues are up. We're getting lots of compliments on the level of customer service. I am not sure what you're perhaps hearing out there in the community, but I think we're making some really good progress there.
Great. Awesome. Thanks for the update.
Treasure, Mr. Treasure, do you have anything that you wanted to add on any of that?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. On the, on the farmer's market, Paige was talking about hiring actually somebody on part time. And this person is, she lives in Wheat Ridge, and she actually works for the Golden Farmer's Market right now. And so she's involved in setting everything up. And so this would be to pay her to take on the Wheat Ridge Farmer's Market. Some of the questions I did have, though, as I was at this, the Local Works Dinner, one of my constituents was asking me about snow shoveling and trying to come up with some ideas of how, how, how we could, I don't know if there's fines if, if people don't shovel. I was, you know, I was kind of talking with her about, you know, is it something that, you know, that the major corridors, like 38th and 44th, would at some point, you know, would the city want to take on the maintenance of that, of shoveling those types of walks? And so we were having those kind of discussions. I don't know if staff has had any thoughts in the past about that.
Yeah, we've had these discussions a lot over the 20 years I've been here. We never, it took us honestly, a long time to get a council to approve an ordinance that required people to shovel their sidewalks. So that just happened several years ago. So we can enforce it and issue fines. I'll let the chief maybe speak to that on where that's at. But we, yeah, it's, it's an issue, and I get it. I don't know what the right answer is. It would take a lot of resources if we take on 38th to hand shovel. You can't use, you could use an ATV, I think, maybe in some of the areas. But it's something we could do, but it would require a lot of resources. We could talk about it. We, we had, we've had discussions about that in the past about identifying those orphaned areas in the city that aren't getting done. But then there's, we can never get a consensus with council because it's like, well, if we do one area that we're letting certain people off the hook, and we're requiring others to shovel their sidewalks. So it's very complicated. We can have more discussions about it. I don't know if Chief, you have any, from an enforcement standpoint?
I would say enforcement is complicated. I get a lot of conversations about
We could talk about it. We've had discussions about that in the past about identifying those orphaned areas in the city that aren't getting done, but then there's, we can never get a consensus with council, because it's like, well, if we do one area that we're letting certain people off the hook and we're requiring others to shovel their sidewalks, so it's very complicated. We can have more discussions about it. I don't know, Chief, do you have any, from an enforcement standpoint?
I would say enforcement is complicated. I get a lot of conversations about, we generally are, while we are somewhat proactive, we really respond to a lot of the complaints more than we are proactive when it comes to shoveling. But a lot of it is, you know, I shoveled, and then somebody pushed the snow from the city back onto the sidewalk in front of my place, and I'm not going to shovel it again, or, and that's no knock on our public works, they're trying to keep the roads clear, but, you know, there are some areas that just don't have the capacity for some of the snowfall amounts we get to put it anywhere. And then, you know, we're really trying to solve a problem and not always give a citation, and sometimes the problem seems difficult to everybody involved to solve, so it's telling somebody that you've got to truck your snow out or something because they don't have a place to put it, it seems really over the top. So we work with them, but it is a very complicated and controversial sometimes issue, and our community service officers do a pretty good job of navigating it, but it's far from perfect, and it creates a lot of, it creates a lot of problems. We don't want to see people walking in the street, yet we don't want to harm our businesses either with untenable options.
Maria, do you have any feedback on, based on your experience?
Sometimes we can look at, especially in heavy snowfalls, is plowing it towards the middle, or coming back, like doing our initial plow, and then like on a day like today, or like Friday, coming back and then pushing more material out to the center and allow it to the sun to take over. So we could certainly work with code enforcement and talk about certain areas where we could potentially do that.
And then some other questions I have, on the light pole request, I'm not really aware of that, is that, how is, how are people finding out about that?
I'm sorry, the light pole request?
Yeah, if somebody wants an additional light pole in their neighborhood.
Oh, streetlights, yeah. I don't think we have a policy in place right now for additional streetlights, is there?
I think there's something on our website.
Okay.
I think we do, we have a program, a policy, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's advertised all that much. We do get requests, but yeah, I don't know if it's really put out there. I don't know if we put it in any of our social media or anything we can, if that's something that we think you would like us to do.
The bigger issue I have is probably the sidewalk. How do people request that from the city? Is there something on the website or something that says, you know, what we talked about tonight, where the sidewalk has a difference in elevation, it becomes a tripping hazard?
Yes, so Lauren and I have actually talked about that, and trying to streamline and probably adding some information to the city's website. So both the ADA and the tripping hazards present a significant liability, so increasing our sidewalk maintenance to either grind down, I think is the plan for 2023, some tripping hazards, or just remove and replace broken segments so that we can eliminate those.
But how does the city identify?
Yeah, right now, I believe it's just through calls or our work order system, yeah, so it's a little bit haphazard.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, does it, the city's probably getting a fairly good email base through the Let's Talk. There's probably some people that they can, you know, have a lot of feedback. Is that something that the city would identify as, hey, if we want to, you know, kind of poll the public on some budget items that they could use that database?
Yes, thank you. In fact, one of the things we love, Councilor Ohm, about What's Up Wheat Ridge is the power of the behind-the-scenes database that allows us to gather contact information from those folks that give it to us, and then align them with sort of things they might be interested in, and then cross-promote. This year, and again, partly due to the ransomware, but really this year, we didn't have, last year, we did some, we did some discussion on What's Up Wheat Ridge, specifically around the 2021 resident survey. We asked people, when you said you're interested in what, like youth services, what does that mean, right? We asked very specific questions. We asked specific questions about recreation center fee increases. And so then what we do with What's Up Wheat Ridge is, once we build that out, we can then email really anybody that's contributed to the What's Up Wheat Ridge program or signed up. And so Ashley Holland in Lauren's world, our community engagement, Neighborhood Engagement Specialist, she'll help us then sort of come up with a good promotional plan, so we'll sort of cross-pollinate, get people involved in the budget. So it might be next year, we're doing the resident survey next year, we'll have, we'll get the report, and we'll scratch our heads and say, huh, I wonder what they meant by that. And then we'll use the tool like What's Up Wheat Ridge to go and find out. But you're right, we are building quite the database now of, I don't know, I call them champions, right? People that are super engaged and interested in what we're doing in Wheat Ridge, and now we have a really good way to reach them proactively.
Thank you. Treasurer Miller.
I had a question for you, Patrick. I'm looking at the CIP fund. I'm a little surprised to see that there's not really a dedicated source of revenue specifically for this fund. There's lodgers' tax, there's some one-time grants, some Dr. Cog funding, but it's primarily just general fund transfers. Is there some history behind that, and have you decided to address that in the future?
Yeah, there is a long history behind that, as there is with almost everything. When I first started here, the city sales tax rate was 2%, and 1% was dedicated to CIP, and 1% was dedicated to general fund operating expenses. We, and, yeah, we didn't get much done. It just wasn't much, it wasn't much revenue back then. And then we eventually increased it to 3%, and we eventually, council approved that all the funds would go to the general fund, and then we would fund the CIP budget on an annual basis as needed, just because we were struggling with operating expenses for many, many years. So yeah, that's, a larger dedicated source would be great. We don't have one right now, you know, there's other revenue sources that Wheat Ridge does not have, that most cities in the metro area have, such as a stormwater fee that would cover all our, most of our drainage-type CIP projects. So that's something I think we need to look at.
Thank you for that. I was just kind of noticing, these are like core maintenance type of projects, and when we go out to bond, typically it's not for maintenance-related things, or it's so much deferred maintenance that we put it off for so long that now we have to bond for it. So, yeah, I think there's some opportunities there long-term, but then again, you know, getting that approved is difficult, so thank you for that. I also had another question for, on the paper performance, I see it's $1.1 million for paper performance and officer's step raises. What is that on a percentage basis?
It ranges from, it's the one spreadsheet I didn't print out, but I worked on it, so it'll range from about 3.5% up to about 5% per cost center and per person. And so that will take into account about 5.5%, I think, in some of the heavy sworn step officer cost centers. So the average, yeah, it's about, between about 3.5% to about 5.5% total, depending on sort of who's in the cost center. So we looked at, you know, we took the average PMP score, Performance Management Plan score, for the average employee last year, and we looked at that. It's about 3.7%. And then we look at cost centers where we have employees that might not be eligible for that, because we have employees that we just hired this year and haven't worked the full year. Then we look at where we need to be in our step plan and fund those cost centers. And then we look at the market survey. We are raising some minimums of our various grades, and so our goal will be to move existing employees not only to the minimum, but 5% above the minimum is our goal next year. And then we're looking at doing some position upgrades as well. So that 1.1 million is all of that. The 1.1 also includes ancillaries, the various, you know, FICA, Medicare, pension. And again, on a percentage basis, it ranges from about 3.5 to 5.5, depending on the cost center and the type of employee.
Thank you. I wanted to ask that question because I believe, you know, strongly in compensating and retaining good city employees is really important. A friend of mine told me in Denver, they're at about 4%, so that's aligned with some other municipalities that we're seeing, so I'm happy to see that. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem Hulteen, did you have another item?
I do. I'd be quick here. So the sidewalk grinding program, I just want to make mention, we do have a pedestrian priority map in our bike pad plan, and so I would definitely, you know, we have sort of a history of being, you know, sort of reactive and responsive to what our city is asking of us, and we've got some plans that actually give direction for us to proactively go pursue those, so would strongly recommend starting there. And on the topic of shoveling our commercial corridors, I can't remember, I just looked, usually the local works budget is included in the budget, and I don't, is it in there this year? I didn't see it in our binder.
I didn't put it in this year, I'm so sorry. It was presented back in August.
I was like 100 years ago.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That was one incident ago. I'm trying to remember, is part of their budget working with 38th Avenue or 44th on bid, on starting a business improvement district?
They, a portion of their money is not specifically for a bid, it's not called out as a bid, but creating more organization around business corridors, starting there to hopefully get to a bid. But yeah, there's money to work with. Instead, not just 38th, but expand it, 29th, 44th, I think those three.
Okay, awesome, because that is another way of getting sidewalks shoveled, is a business improvement district that is not the city's responsibility, but the business's, so would be great to see that moving forward. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for a great report, great budget. Thank you, councilors, for insightful questions. I had just a couple myself. My first one was that I hadn't seen the Dr. Cog, and I wanted to thank sort of staff and all of the people in our organization that go out to other agencies and just bring money into our city. We've been very, very successful, and we, and I was looking for the Dr. Cog, we got lately about 15 millions for some projects, and I think I found that on page eight, so I think that scratched that one off. I wanted to, I wanted to ask Karen what the lifeguards were doing in the winter, are they, are they, they're full-time employees, right, so they're...
Yeah, if we hire five full-time employees, they will be guarding at the recreation center.
Excellent, thank you.
Plus swim lessons.
Yes, good, okay, great. So that's a year-round sort of benefit that we have from them. Thanks so much. Fiber optic is coming to Lakewood, and I understand that they're interested in Wheat Ridge. Is this, is there any tickler on that?
Yeah, Maria, we just had a meeting with them.
Yes, we've had a couple meetings now with Google Fiber to consider expanding that into the Wheat Ridge area. So as you mentioned, they are in Lakewood, planning for implementation later this year, and so our next steps are to evaluate a right-of-way agreement with them, so that should be forthcoming, and then we'll work with the city attorney on that, as well as bring more details back to city council.
Okay. As part of the Waswood rebuild project, are we putting in a conduit when we're opening up the street in order to facilitate that down the way?
We are not, but I think I did mention that in our last, our meeting last week, is to potentially look at some empty conduits so we don't have to tear up the street again.
That's the time to do it. Do we have any, micromobility, when I look at it, seems to stop at Sheridan, is there any opportunity or thought about micromobility in our little seat? Scooters?
Yeah, yeah, so we've kind of seen the effects of that, because they are typically geofenced around, so the, like, bird and lift do not cross jurisdictions, so they set the boundary at roughly the city boundary where they have an agreement. So we, but we've seen them kind of dropped in Wheat Ridge, and then we have to return them to the agency. So we have not explored that as an option or an idea yet.
Okay, and that may be something that we'll look at in the future. And then I had sort of an overall question. How does our, and I'm not quite sure how to phrase that, how does our sort of budget, budget per resident compare with our peer organizations, our peer cities?
I'm not sure if I can answer that this evening, Mayor. That's a good question. We used to have a tax receipt that, as part of our education program years ago, we'd put out to the residents to show them how much, how much they're paying for the services that we're providing, and what the gap is, but I couldn't tell you today. We haven't, you know, I guess you could divide it by our population right now, if that's what you want.
You know, I don't need, you know, I think that the fact that I believe that we're providing better services than any of our peer cities in the area, and, you know, have much better staff and the program's going on, so that's my personal view.
We'll go with that.
Okay, let's go with that. We've been here for a while. Is there any further discussion that we need to have on the budget before we move to our next item on the agenda? Seeing none, let's go to our next item on the agenda.
Should we get a consensus to move forward with, to bring it forward for approval?
All those in favor, bringing the budget forward for approval, please raise your hand. We have unanimous consensus to move this forward next week.
Awesome.
One week from tonight. And now I will ask for your staff report.
I don't have anything else this evening, thank you.
Okay. Let's see if our elected officials have some reports they'd like to make tonight. Going once. Mr. Clerk.
I just wanted to make note of the fact that I used to be a banker in New York. I used to have to analyze financial statements, credit applications, et cetera, and teach people how to do this. I can tell you for a fact that the vast majority of for-profit businesses and municipalities would love to have our financial statement, because they don't operate the way we do. And we can't sort of overlook that, because despite what we've been through in the last two and a half years, we're still thriving. And that is a reflection of the staff's outstanding effort as well as what the council does here. So applaud yourselves, folks, you're doing one hell of a job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further before we adjourn? Thank you all for being here tonight. Oh, one more, one more from our Mayor Protem.
Nope, nope, Janice is trying to cut me off over here, but I got the microphone on. So it's Thanksgiving week, and my late mother wrote a poem in fifth grade, and she was really bitter because she got a B minus on it, and she made us all memorize this poem and recite it every Thanksgiving. So I'm going to recite the traditional Hulteen Thanksgiving poem for all of you guys, which is a fifth grader's almost feeling grade poem, so it's really awesome. I mean, it goes like this. Gobble gobble, said the turkey before Thanksgiving Day. How will you eat, how will you treat me? Will you eat me? If you do, I'll run away. And so came Thanksgiving Day, and though the turkey prayed and prayed, they ate him all up, and that was the end, and I'm afraid the story we cannot mend. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay. With that, we'll ask everybody here and throughout our city a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll be back here a week from tonight. Thank you. We'll stand adjourned.